...ask the Deputy Commissioner. Unfortunately, we have overdone what's been drafted in this new second phase. I guess I would just remind everybody that this second phase is already approved as the capital plan that the city council has to do.
Yes, this is Phase Two. We've got a major place approximately 150 trees at various locations, primarily along Shore Road and Park Avenue. There's actually 15 work zones that will be planted with trees in. Dragon egg. I don't know if you recall, it was a contract that I worked with two years ago, performing a lot of the tree rules. You check their references in your work here. So that work, should this be approved, we'll start probably within a couple of weeks.
Very good, very good. The Commissioner, I just have a question, only because I get this question all the time. We're very grateful, you know, to have these new trees and trees being planted, and we have many proposals about where trees were needed, were once there and no longer there, and we're happy that part of the 150 will go to those locations that people have been talking about. But I've been getting a number of requests, and I don't know if you can answer this question. We still have sycamore trees that are sick and are really posing endangerment. What do we have planned for this? What can we say to folks that call us about these trees that the branches fall, they're leaning over properly, they truly aren't in danger?
Unfortunately, through FEMA program, there's no more funding available for removable trees. So anything that is adjacent to a curve in front of someone's house, unfortunately, they have responsibility to basically approve or not approve by that tree group. So as we own property, they have to maintain it. So unfortunately, the people who own a home with a tree branch have to force shape it to be able to walk on it at this moment, so on the roof that way.
It's important for the public to know that, that we no longer have the funding to take down trees now.
No, not today, no.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the council?
Only with respect to just communication, if we can place that information somewhere on our city website, so that people will have the information with respect to tree removal.
Very important, very important. Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio. Are there any comments, questions from the public? I see two hands here. We'll start with the lady on the left, and then the right just behind you. Welcome. Welcome, Missy, and I recognize you from back there.
Nora Ethan, I just clarify for me, the 150 new ones, are you first to replace the dead ones that are had been replaced that have not been removed?
Is that the only question you have, because he'll come up and allow you to...
Yes.
That's the only question, state it. Go ahead, go ahead. Commissioner.
I was actually in the front of that. Yeah, that's the cooperation down inside, if you see. It's a separate issue, it's a separate issue in society with the contractor.
That's right. This is a separate project altogether from the trees that were planted in the previous contract, sand neutralized trees, post-sanding contract. And a lot of those trees, or some of them that have deceased are under warranty, we are working on a contract to get those replaced. But we don't want that, those issues to hold off this item, so we're super focused on the things that you're asking for.
It's all separate.
Thank you, Missy. And we have the young lady just behind you there. Welcome. Just state your name to the director.
Ms. Goldman, I happen to be aware of a tree that's on one of Pine Street, Monroe Boulevard.
Will you use the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry, in the southeast corner of East Pine Street, Monza Boulevard, the branch is blocking the sub sign. So I think that should not be included in the fact that homeowners should be responsible. It's not my house, but the thing is, the leaves are completely blocking the sub sign, and there was already one accident there, his pet's on there.
What is the cross street on that?
Pine Street, Monroe Boulevard.
In Monroe?
Yeah. Also...
I see the books on public works, right?
Yeah.
Very good.
It's from the previous, when they planted the trees. Actually, there was never a tree there, they just put one there. And actually, there, my next order, actually, my, sorry, my next order, he first got a tree that is now dead, it's been dead since probably May even, when I got my unpleasant tree. So that falls out of the previous contract, if that could be explained. I don't know, I don't think it runs another year, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, that's very important news to us. And again, just to add to that, if we see other situations of close danger, please let us know, please call the city, please come here. We are going to go through the young lady to the right, then Ms. Mary Vellasevich, so behind you, Ms. Vellasevich, first with the interview. Yes, you have to excuse me, I don't have the best vision, and I, I, it needs to blur towards the back there, and you get a little blurred, sorry, you have the best tattoo you are. Yeah, I see, but it's good to see you.
Karen Kirkland, 2016. My question is, I could, could this gentleman clearly, so what I wanted to know is, are you going to be planting any trees where you've never planted a tree before that's been removed? Because I've been waiting since they all have cut down to get at least one. I hadn't even got that, and they took away three. So really, you know, having a real deficit here, every time I ask a question, they say, "Well, we received many, you know, requests for more additional funds and more additional trees." And, you know, I keep hearing the numbers come in, the trees get planted, and then they come in and pick them up again, because somebody takes care of where they put them. So, you know, I kind of manage to scale them myself, or around by one.
That's a very good question. Commissioner, again, thank you.
I'm going to take this gentleman's address, and we'll get to it, hopefully somehow we can get a tree that's there, that is 150, hopefully. There's one work zone where it's various locations, and we do have a lot of, we have a little bit flexibility, so hopefully we can come here. I'll get to that, miss.
Very good, very good. Thank you so much. There was also, yes, Ms. Vellasevich, welcome. It's good to see you. And again, we just need your name to the director.
Ma'am Vellasevich. I have a question, I'm busy right now, but are these trees, is that including like some on next inch, where we have all the work done? Because it's kind of bountiful, and I didn't know if any of those...
Is that your only question, Ms. Vellasevich? Could she do answer multiple questions?
Yeah, that's also a totally separate project, a project that's under the building contracting, and by that we're going to order a lot of trees, maybe in two weeks, you can see that whole area when it's ready.
There, there, yeah, that is such good news, Ms. Fabrizio. And again, are there any other questions or comments on this second item regarding the trees? Folks, this is certainly an important part of our Long Beach, I have to tell you. I've had two sycamore trees for the last four years in front of my house, and they had to be taken down, and the amount of shade that they provided was phenomenal, and we now, you know, have a very even house. So these trees are very, very important, in addition to absorbing the flooding and water and everything that they are actually doing in the city. I see it on the hand in the back. Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Welcome.
We're talking about how many trees were planted.
We just need your name.
New trees were planted to replace old of the new trees that ended up being dead, dying. So new trees were planted in early, early summer, late spring, on, between Edwards and National on Beach Street. They, all the trees toward Edwards, the new ones, the replacement of the new ones, are now all dead. So the replacements also now dead. And I ordered mine, I ordered mine until the cat came home, and it's now dying.
Now, these, these trees were trees that the city planted?
This was part of the program after FEMA. They were planted, all the dead trees were taken out, new trees were planted. Two years ago, they were planted in the summer, those died, and then those will be placed this past spring, and now those will now die.
It's in the second set?
The second set.
Wow, that's a very good question.
That's why.
This, for reading, I mean, that's a question.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is all part of the litigation with our data contract.
I don't think everyone, they need to hear that, that's very important.
Unfortunately, this is also a lot of the ongoing litigation.
There's actually, no, there's, there's no litigation.
No, it's a contract.
With respect to this, with respect to those trees, we're actually, we have to provide our data with that tree list first, that's what we're attempting to work with our contract, our results, I should say, first, with providing that list. Then there's going to be sequential steps that we have to make sure that the trees get planted, where they're in places this year, where we find it.
Yeah, the most important part of the, the most recent patch that we've been working on.
Maybe the contractor should look at that, even the area that's been planted twice, there could be an issue, so we can go and raise that in the contract.
Yeah, definitely, we still have to provide the contract with our consultant's list of that trees, because those are...
Okay, I guess we were trying to take that area down that you mentioned.
And it's important to give us the, this information to our Commissioner, and I know that he's taking down information now, that we can follow. Very important question you've asked, and thank you, thank you for being here. Are there any more comments on the tree legislation, the tree vote that we will have on item number two? Okay, we're going to move on to our next item. Thank you.
I am creating a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter through a contract for emergency ambulance billing and collection services from the most responsible proposers.
Okay, the last time this service was awarded was October 2012. Multimedic billing service charged a fee of 6.5% on all monies collected. With this new contract, Multimed is charging a fee of 6% of all monies collected, resulting in savings to the city over the lifetime contract. Fees for medicaid billing are also being reduced. I would thank our Fire Commissioner Scott Chemmings for doing a good job, working contractors to lower the percentage, and ask him, you know, to give one or two sentences overview of the contract.
Thanks for being here, Commissioner, good to see you.
Thank you. Multimed's been our annual billing bender now since about 1998. When we first started an annual transportation through the fire department in 1993, and started going for it, we had a company that charged us for every bill they sent out, we paid by the piece. So there was really no incentive for them to go after people, and we were paying, and I was at one of the New York State Fire Chiefs conferences, and ran into Multimed at a conference, and spoke to them, and they explained to me their process, how they, you know, bill on a percentage, whether they elect us. It's a win-win for us and for them, the more money they make for us, the more money they make for themselves. So they, we had a very good arrangement with them since the contract, we renewed it. When they came in and submitted their proposal for this renewal, they came in at 6.5%. I called them up and asked them if the consultant had handled well, and they went back down with the 6.10. So once you get that half a percent over the time of a year, it's more money for the city. And we've been very, they've been very successful for us, and we're very happy with the service.
Commissioner, it's good to hear, it's good to hear that, definitely will do that. Are there any comments from the council? Okay, and any comments from the public on this item number three regarding the ambulances and the stadiums? We are, you know, going to have. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chemmings, and thank you, folks. We'll have to move on to item number four.
I am supporting the resolution authorized budget amendments to the capital fund budget.
Okay, pursuant to resolution number 51/516, newly adopted by the City Council on May 17, 2016, the city entered into two intermunicipal agreements with Nassau County for the funding of the purchase of computer equipment with the city's police department, and for the purchase of a shallow water road and related equipment with the city's fire department. This resolution simply accepts and now incorporates the funding to move forward. So we've already entered into the agreement, and now we are actually receiving the funding to move forward and make these happen. We just passed on that the police department was greatly appreciative, the fire division was greatly appreciative, and the fire chief sent over a note of appreciation to the police department as well.
Okay, very important, both, folks, any comments from the council on these two pieces of equipment to save the both parts of the police department? Any comments to the council, ma'am? And how about the public? Do we have anyone commenting on, yes, please come over to us? Good to see you.
Stan Pinto, I'm actually speaking of, it had my pleasure, said Denise Ford, she called me today and asked me to pass on some words. It's her pleasure to be able to help secure these resources for the police department and the fire department, making sure they have the best equipment to do their jobs. And once again, she thanks the city for working with accounting and allowing her to help secure the funds for their emergency responders.
Great, thank you, thank you for that message. Are there any comments from the public on the purchasing of this equipment for the fire and also the police department? Very important equipment. Okay, we're going to go on to our next item.
I am filing a resolution scheduling a fresh regular city council meeting for October, for Wednesday, October 5, 2016.
Given that the holiday motion falls on Tuesday, the report, city council meeting is rescheduled for next Monday.
Okay, I hope everyone's clear about that, we are rescheduling our next city council meeting, as you can see, it's right there in the resolutions. Are there any comments on the council, any comments on the public on this rescheduling of our next city council meeting? Okay, folks, and I'll turn the meeting over to our...
I am voting for it. I am supporting the resolution updating the procurement policy and procedures of the senior Long Beach.
I'll second that.
I'm very proud to be voting on this important piece of legislation, and I vote yes.
First, I'd like to just thank corporate counsel and thank Roman DC's leadership. Second, I'm just really pleased and proud with respect for our vision in the city. I believe that ultimately, this will be a model for other municipalities. And again, as we move forward to promote women and minority businesses, I think this will ultimately shape transformative as well as economic development for Long Beach as well as Nassau County. I'm just pleased to be a part of this evening, and I vote yes.
Once again, I'm proud to be in a city that leads by example here in Nassau County. I vote yes.
Yes, and I have to say that, you know, as a city that's modeled inclusion and participation of everyone, this is very much a long gone line, and I vote an absolute yes.
I am choosing the resolution authorized by the city manager to enter through a contract for furnishing and placing of various trees throughout the city with the most responsible bid.
I will. Yes.
I am creating a resolution authorized by the city manager to enter through a contract for emergency ambulance billing and collection services from the most responsible proposers. Introduce the move the option this side.
Comment to the sentence.
Again, I want to thank you for the work of the Commissioner Chemmings on this, and my vote is absolutely yes.
I am supporting the resolution authorized budget amendments to the capital fund budget.
I will. I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I am filing a resolution to schedule a fresh regular city council meeting for October, for Wednesday, October 5, 2016.
I will.
I'll second. Yes, and thank you, and healthy process, and we need to all who are celebrating. I appreciate everyone, happy new year to them.
Yes.
Yes. I will.
I'll second that.
Yes.
I'd just like to say how happy I am to be here tonight, with the first meeting that's being translated into Spanish, thank you very much, Natalie Sitt back there, I really appreciate it. I vote yes.
Yes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we now enter the good welfare portion of the city council meeting, and again, we remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit on comments and questions, and we ask everyone to respect that limit, because this way we'll have, everyone will get an opportunity to be able to share their concerns. And again, I want to remind everyone that we, the city, the council, our city manager, we believe in that this part of our meeting is extremely important for us to hear from you, and that's what we intend to have, to hear from you. Our first person that has signed up in coming up is Mr. Matthew Amato. Matthew, are you here? Wonderful. Matthew, welcome.
As Martin said, I'm here just for the Babbage campaign, and I'm happy that the council ordered up in the last meeting, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, thank you, Lord, for picking it up and taking that position. We want all of you and others to continue to do that, and again, thank you. Our next person that we have is Mr. Phil Schlitz.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have Mr. Adler, Matthew Adler, I mean, yes. Good to see you, Mr. Adler, thank you for being here.
Two quick comments and a question, actually. Is there any way to look into the timing of the lights on Park Avenue when you're crossing it? I'm in pretty good shape, that I can't get across it in one night without running across, it's kind of a hassle with a family of kids, so you kind of have to stop halfway through or kind of dash to second half, and we look into the timing of the lights, make it a little longer, a little safer to be dashing across. And is there any plans on the city garage on Long Beach Boulevard, the white building, we need to redo some artwork on it, I'm out of artistic, so I'm not volunteering myself, I can draw a clip stitch video, but that's about it, but maybe do the art council, maybe do a mural, I don't know, maybe with the, what's it called, the stands, things like that.
What building are you talking about?
The garage on Long Beach Road.
Yes, you know, it's interesting, I recently attended the arts council meeting, and they're talking actually about doing murals different locations, so I will bring that up.
It's white, and it's white on the university.
It's a great idea, I'm expecting that they're looking into, not necessarily that building, but that's a great idea, and it's something that's part of my vision, so.
Thank you, very important, thank you, thank you, Mr. Adler. And that's, I think that's a very critical point to make, because when you come over the bridge, the first thing you see is that building, and we want to give a better impression, and I was thinking, Ms. Mary Vellasevich, you're here? Phil, good to have you up here. Welcome, Ms. Vellasevich.
Hi, Ms. Vellasevich. A couple of questions on this Fabrizio, or a question, but I wanted to bring up something that a lot of people were talking about today, why we're lowering our requirements and standards for a public work speech, where if you go online and you look, most of them require some background in engineering, and it's posted several times today, and the requirements are like high school, and Mr. Fabrizio, this is nothing against, just asking a question that's out there, and, and people are asking, why do you compare us to like North Penn State and these other cities and municipalities? Why are our standards going down when others are going up?
Great point, well taken, Ms. Vellasevich, I'll agree to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Vellasevich, the standards actually haven't, my knowledge, changed at all, it would go through the social services, they change?
No, they would change, because I went online, and they would change right before Mr. Laka Guba had come in, and they were put down. Before that, we had Kevin, I forget his last name, he was an engineer, early counting.
Back then, it changed, yes.
Yes, back then, but I'm saying, okay, Mr. Laka Guba is gone, and the questions are out there, and why, why are we going for less? And we have to end up paying an engineer to sign up on projects that's just counting up.
I probably missed something, I heard you said they changed, Matthew, they changed.
No, why are ours low, and, and others are going up higher? That's my question, and why are we, why are we, when money is tight everywhere? We're, we're paying an engineer to sign up on our projects, it's costing us money, I'm sure, quite bad. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Vellasevich. Are there any comments from the council?
No, I mean, they're doing a thorough process, and, you know, this process is going on right now, and they, the city may in fact hire a commissioner who has, who is an engineer, so I take what you're saying, that there is a serious process going on, you can process now, so.
I asked the same question several weeks ago, and it was my understanding that there's a different philosophy with respect to the way that our city manager sees the position, because he is the city manager. And so I asked the question, obviously as an educator, why wasn't this stated as a high school diploma and a little more respect to management? And so it's my understanding that it's, it's all about the philosophy of which this person should be hired. I'm sure, again, because of the process, that we'll have further information in regard to our files.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say, Mr. Fabrizio is here, and, and we have an engineer, just seeing Mr. Fabrizio, who's been in here, and I've seen him around town forever, and, and if that's what we're going to do, then let's do it. And, and I believe almost all an engineer in this area, of course, needs to be capable.
So, thank you for that suggestion, and we are certainly going to take that into consideration as well. Thank you, again, thank you, everyone, for your comments on that. Our next person that we have is Ms. Jessica Carriaro. Jessica, welcome. Just speak your name for everybody.
Jessica Carriaro, I'm here for the Babbage campaign, and I heard that it was proposed in last week's meeting, that we were going to take it into consideration, and I'm very happy, I've been, you know, out around now, supporting it over the summer and for a long time, and I wanted to just like say, from Ms. Swan, that she says to help take our beaches, and that, why shouldn't we have plastic bags that use for twelve minutes? That when we put into our environment for 400 to 1,000 years, that's pretty crazy, and I wanted to also, just like Mr. Adler said, about the light time changing, which I'm a pedestrian who can't drive and have no athletic ability, and I also do struggle to have to sprint across the street, so maybe we could look into that, that'd be great, thank you.
Just by you, so much. Yeah, and I have to say, Jessica, that I too, when my wife and I cross Park Avenue, we wonder why it's such a quick light, we have to wait in the middle, and wait across the other half. You're absolutely right, point very well taken. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Our next person is Ms. Stacy Bousa. Welcome, Ms. Bousa.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Stacy Bousa. I was here at last meeting. I hope you don't get tired of me. I'm here on the half lob, bring your home bag. I started, got up this morning, I felt like trepidation and I felt like nervous about speaking and poke speaking. And then I told my husband, my clients for the day, and he said, why bother? And after I mentioned coming here. So being a tourist, I was like, oh, I'm bothering now that you just said that. Never mind. And I pick up plastic bags by the thousands on our beaches on a yearly basis. I'm just here to support it. And I know you want to be front runners. And this is an incredible way to be front runners. And for your children, for your grandchildren, and for our beach, our community. It's just a win-win. And I also want to thank you. I was late. I was coming from the airport, dropping someone off. And I walked in, two of my sons standing up here as a bar. I didn't even know he was being recognized tonight. And I want to thank you for recognizing him. He left the other night, a couple of weeks ago at nine thirty at night because someone was deemed missing. Wrapped his torch, put on his bat suit, pulled it out the door while I saw it was in dust. And mothers like my gut was in my throat. So they feel it, they believe it, they work hard, and they take it very seriously. And thank you for acknowledging him. But again, bring your roll back. Come on.
Thank you, Ms. Bousa. Something that we are very seriously looking into passing legislation on. And again, we welcome. And please let your husband know that part of, part of the American way is coming and letting us know how you feel, what you'd like to see. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Next person is Joanne Moore. Joanne Moore still here?
Yes.
Ah, welcome, Ms. Moore. Good to see you again.
Joanne Moore. And I'm just here to say thank you for your words last meeting. And you're still very active. And we hope you'll see us. And we love you for, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
And just so you know, the city did a presentation last night with the Chamber of Commerce. And we are working with the Chamber of Commerce on this issue. So we are moving forward. And we take this very seriously as well, seriously as well.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have Ms. Nancy Goldman. Nancy, come up again. Good to see you.
Welcome. Hi, Nancy Goldman. I just wanted to mention about the trees that are dead, that are existing, that would possibly go around town and remove the dead trees first, while they go starting planting trees so that they can figure out where that I'm going to put the trees going since we're paying, I guess we're paying for them unless that was grant money for the contrast. And that's it.
Okay. Ms. Moore, thank you so much, Ms. Goldman. You know, we can hear from you. And okay, our next person is Jerome Koffler. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Koffler. I live in the 25 Neptune Boulevard, a co-op apartment building that was completed in 1964. It is presently the highest, tallest building in Long Beach, to my knowledge. It probably, under today's building code, would not be permitted to be erected. And yet, there are considerations now for developers who are looking to put up buildings fifteen stories high, eighteen stories high. I'm here to plead with you, the members of the city council of Long Beach, to be very vigilant about what is permitted and what is not permitted to go up in this city. I think that a huge proportion of the residents of Long Beach are here not looking to be living in a place like Manhattan or Miami Beach. Excuse me. There are a number of considerations here. Number one is lifestyle, what our city looks like and will continue or not continue to look like, who it will attract, and who will be deterred from coming in here. Number two, parking. My wife and I each have a car, as many people here do. We sometimes go round and round and round for twenty minutes when we come home late in the evening looking for a parking spot. I'm sure that if these proposed buildings are accepted, they will require parking probably for one car per park. That's not the answer. How about the guests, relatives, friends who come to visit these people on busy, hot, summer weekends who have no parking space now? What will it be like when these buildings are up and occupied? I said to my wife several days ago that I'm willing to bet that at least three people in Long Beach are against these proposals for every person that will accept it or ignore the fact that it's likely to happen. I was wrong. We at 25 Neptune have a cooperators group, and I'm on board with that group. We are taking petitions. And each person on the board went around one floor to get petitions signed against this kind of overbuilding. I shall. There are seventeen apartments on my floor. I found people home in fifteen of the seventeen. Of the fifteen that I got somebody at home, fourteen apartments signed this petition to not allow this construction. One did not, and he wasn't against it, he just didn't know where he stood on the issue. So there is really a great deal of sentiment against these proposals. And I hope that the council takes that into consideration.
Okay, Ms. Koffler, thank you so much for coming up here. And we appreciate you having come in. And please share that information as well, okay? Our next person we have is Mr. Smalls, Mr. Dewey Smalls. Mr. Smalls, thank you for staying with us, with this portion of our meeting.
This is the, this is the government of this city. I just want to just thank you again for what you did yesterday. Passing that resolution for MWBA's, removing minorities participating in this current process is big. You guys are exceedingly men. And we hope that others will follow. I'm pretty sure others will follow. Because this gives me ammunition to go to other places and say, as usual, Long Beach is doing it. Okay? Does it always come back, it always comes back to you guys? Even when Sandy, everyone was wondering, well, why is Long Beach? Because Long Beach is special. We knew this was ground zero at Sandy. Because you know what everybody was hoping for. You know what you did this city. Because you've always been the forefront of issues in this county since I've been. And so I can't thank you enough for coming together on this and realizing that you guys are accepting that. And for the residents, they understand that without them, this wouldn't happen. So thank you again. And thank you to you guys. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you for that ability to contribute for people like yourself to continue to come up and help us. Because there's always room for improvement in any kind of government. And we're here to help the movement in that direction. We have our next person is Mr. Sal Scott. Is he still here with us? Mr. Scott?
Rest in peace.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think our next person is Mr. Hodge James.
Thank you.
Hey, James. Good to see you again.
You too. James Hodge, 95, Hope Street, Long Beach, New York. I just stand in this time to say that, again, I appreciate that this council may need some more for work so diligently for the legislation that passed on tonight and the council. Also, I would like to stand in support of policies that have been put forward, parting the changing of the guard every six months. Marcus Tinka spoke about it recently. I've spoken to different individuals about it. And I would like the city to know that I want to send support. Thank you for the job that you have been doing. But parting the policy, I supported helping get everyone up there elected into the seat. And I believe in everyone keeping their word when they said they're going to do everything. Not me alone, but my community and others. And I know that the North Park has supported very heavily in all of the council members in keeping their word. So the six months have passed, it's nine months, Anissa Moore has established herself as the leader prior of her reputation, deceives her in just being a city councilperson, but being able to hear from the east to west, the north and the south, from Nevada to Maple, from the ocean to the bay, and all of the things that she's been able to do. I recommend that this city, you know, follow, whether it was verbal or handwriting, that they select her as president of the city council. I think it will be a great accomplishment for the city. And I think that a lot of things will continue getting done that have been done. Also, I'd like to just thank, of course, Mr. Smalls and Shelley Braise. For people that don't know them, I've known them my whole life. And the Braise family are historical workers on behalf of the community, done so much. Dewey Smalls, I've been following him my whole life. He was a great basketball player. He can still shoot some hoops, too. But also, there's other history makers here, too. And I would like to thank Mr. Bill Owens for being here as the history maker who integrated Concord's University. So as I talk about Anissa Moore being the president of this city council because of leadership and her example of being able to work as a team member and her being able to make decisions not predicated on political connections, but on best practices for the city. I, again, I'm the vice back chair of the CSEA. I believe if you talk to over our 300 members, they all support this idea also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration. We have our next person, who is Ms. Helen Alessi. Welcome, Ms. Helen. And I'm glad you stayed with us. Do.
Good evening, Helen Alessi, 800 East Justice Street. I'm here to request very strongly that the city council consider very carefully being able to have services here at the city council meetings so that Latino families can understand what is happening. They are entitled to this because of the legislation that was passed here on language access. As you know, we have somebody interpreting in the back room. We have purchased, Opec Torino has purchased the equipment. And we expect that some changes be made to the legislation to also include this form. In order for every Long Beacher to be a participant, an active participant, have their constitutional rights adhered to, we need to be able to have a voice. In order to have a voice, we need to understand what is happening here. It's very complicated. What you will do is extremely complicated. There are so many issues at large here that we need to be part of. We are sixteen percent of the population here in this city. And we expect some real changes because we will support those changes. We will work with you. We will help you. We will guide you as much as we can and help you forth and educate. But we really expect some serious thought about this because we have been waiting since April 15, 2015, when the legislation came through. Although the legislation is enacted, I don't feel that it's been implemented and enforced. Training has not happened for the staff. And we need a communications plan. People don't know that there are things that exist on the website. We don't have the capacity as a community. We are struggling and very, very challenged. But we are taxpayers, and we deserve to be heard. So I'm asking very respectfully that something happened and quickly. Also, I'd like to say that I want to thank President Torres for his leadership since Hurricane Sandy and before. I feel that your professionalism, your confidence, your background as an educator has been superb. And I, I hope that people understand that in order to bring progress, we also need unity. And so I hope that people appreciate your leadership and what you have brought to the city. Thank you.
The fact that the subject is very near my heart. And you know that my background is linguistics. And I believe that having two languages, like having two brains, is better than having one. And this is why I felt very, very strongly that bilingual education was for everyone. And you're absolutely right. This city council meeting is not inclusive to language minorities. There's no question about it. Right now, I think you've taken, Latino citizens taking the first step to help the city by bringing this equipment, very expensive equipment. And as we speak, folks, I'm being translated into the ears of those who don't understand English. And it's a very important part of the constitutional rights of citizens to be included and to be a part of the process of city council or any governmental process. Thank you, Ms. Alessi.
Thank you, Ms. Alessi. And I just want to say, as you always said beautifully, that progress equals unity. And I had the opportunity to stand with you during the language access launch this year, because this is my first year coming on to the council. And it's my understanding that we are moving forward with this process. I don't know all of the specifics, but I do know based on the initial meeting that we had this year at City Hall, that you made it clear that there are so many of our residents that we need to connect with. And I've also encountered several residents who are unsure about the role that they play with respect to gaining access to information. And so I stand with you on that. It's also unfortunate that as a council, we haven't had the opportunity to meet as a caucus to discuss some of these pressing issues since March 9 of this year. And so hence the delay. And I hope that we can move forward, President Torres, that we can do what we need to do to empower all of our residents.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. And thank you, Ms. Rettie. Okay. Our next person is a member is Ms. Martha Quatero. Martha, you still here? Thank you. Thank you for being here, staying with us.
And I'm the founder of my first Latino civic association. I thank you so much for tonight, for being able to acknowledge our organization. We've been here 21 years. We've been here 21 years and very hard. We've done it all through volunteers because we hardly even get any funding because our group, they say what it's funded by, they take a lot of funds and most of them have been anted. So we're kind of praying God, we need to continue to help us because we've done it a long time and all because we've done it to help you, a lot of volunteer work. So we don't get a lot of money from anywhere. Right now, we're going to have our gala, I have a total of 13, that'd be reasonable, I hope you'll make it. I just want to thank you so much, all of you, for just, you know, the parting, taking our good job from Sandy to now, and I thank you all, I thank you very much. For all of you that have been here since Sandy, I know you've worked very hard. I am very grateful to you, Mr. Torres, after Torres, for all your support and all the good things that you've done for the city in the last four years. I thank you so very much, you've worked very hard, so I say the same to you also. And one of the things that I have to tell you, I feel so blessed to have you all as my best counsel. And I know that a lot of decisions that you make among yourselves, sometimes people out there, they don't know. You know, it's like when presidents work, they're ready, we don't know what's happening and so we decide that we have to talk. But most of the things that you have decided and among you have been perfect and I thank you for that. So I wish that everybody would understand that it's not our place to tell you what to do because you've done it so far excellently, okay? I feel bad if they want to put any, you know, separate any, any one of you, because it's not, that's not good. It's not good, it's been done out there right now with the selection and it's not good. So I bless all of you, continue and don't let nobody else down. Tell your guys what to do, how to do it, the way to go. Because I know that you have a loving system, so keep it up. You've been wonderful, I thank you so very much and you're welcome. Well done, this is your first year, you've been very blessed, you feel blessed right now, but as you can see, look at that, it's been a long time and you're going to just as great as day up, okay? And good time, alright?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Otebo.
Thank you so much.
It's very nice of you to say that. Thank you. Okay, our next person is again, Mr. Orlando Ariza. Orlando, I'm glad you're here. I know you work all day long and you're exhausted, but we appreciate you staying with us. Thank you. It'll be 10 more times for all of us.
Thank you, thank you to the board and the special, thank you to Mr. President Torres. First of all, we really, really, with Baro, I have to thank you guys for being, for you listening to us, getting here that you guys approved, and we have a very fine, it's very important that you know, 30 years ago, I didn't speak, won't work any English and still don't speak English, but anyway, I tried. I think, and I know how valuable this is, because it took me 10 years to understand how, what is the process of being in America and stay in America and work in America. I pay a lot of meals, I pay a lot of the frontings because I came with English well at that time, make a lot of mistakes and I know you guys helping us, the community, we will work better in our community, we will pay all our dues at the time, we will do a lot of things for the city and for the country in very ways, in easy ways, when we understand the language because the process is very hard. When you come, when you come in here 19 years or 20 years old, come to this country, it's like you've had to go again, it's a lot of new things. And because yes, you learn the language, you have to learn the language, but you have to begin with something. And if you don't have the rules or you don't have the language to explain how to start and begin to work and make a lot of mistakes. And I know I make ton of mistakes trying to figure out a lot of things in America because I have a language barrier. I still have it, but I still work on it and I want to thank you for all that. And on behalf of the Latino community, the Latino Civic Association, we have 350 families and thank you for all the hard work that you do for us, that you call me all the time, get in touch with your friend and you tell me what's going on so I can translate and Spanish to the community, to all the families to call my, I'll check it, what's going on. I want to thank you with Baro, I have to thank you very much. Your job is me, so proud of you guys, being the first Latino on the Civic of this council. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Orlando, thank you so much and, you know, we're very grateful to you, you know, and of course, we know you've been very successful in the little time that you've been in this country and you're a model to everyone. And next person is Ms. Stacy Russo, she's still here with us? And okay, yes. Ms. Sal Scott. Ms. Scott, yes, I know that you have to step back for a moment, please come up. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. And we were afraid you might have left us, glad that you did.
Good afternoon, Scott. I was just concerned, I wanted to know about the sanitation workers. Many years ago, I did some research and I called different towns to find out the starting salary and it was like 34,000 a year for sanitation workers without high school diploma. I wanted to know how much does the sanitation workers receive a year and what is the starting salary and also, if you thought about the question that I asked on last week in reference to instead of the teenagers receiving the monies from the sub program, which having a higher salary than the sanitation workers, if they could receive the salary, the increase and then the children, teenagers receive, you know, the minimum wage and then the men receive the wage because I'm sure they have to answer.
Ms. Scott, that is an excellent question and I am still looking into that because I haven't gotten all the pieces together yet, but we certainly will be in touch with you. If you could leave your number so we could get back to you, I mean, if that's possible before the end of the meeting, that's such an important question, I'm also very concerned about that as well.
Any references with salary?
Yeah.
Well, the week you should go, it depends on whether they're full-time employees or part-time employees. Full-time, I can't vote for it if you're like, you're all there. So they do differ depending on whether the employee is full-time or if it's governed by a law, part-time or not, it is not so rigid, part-time depends on the status.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, thank you for being here. Next we have Mr. Pinto, Sam Pinto, if you're still here, good, thank you, thank you for staying with us.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, I just want to bring to light, maybe the council recognizes there was a great amount of residents holding signs in the back by overdevelopment. I just want to make sure that there's a voice for them and they're noticed. So it may not be many left now, but there was definitely a considerable amount who are here and they want to make sure that they're being noticed. So put them out there, they was against overdevelopment, so I'm here taking sure that they have a voice.
Very good, very good, Sam, I think that's a wonderful thing that you stood up for a group that has talked about and mentioned that and we appreciate it, Sam, thank you. A second, thank you for being here. Okay, our next person that we have is Mr. Ronnie Miles, Ronnie Miles, good to see you here, good to see you, Ronnie.
Good evening, councilman, my name is Ronnie Miles. First question I had is, why do we shuffle the deck before we can put a welfare? What do you think, shuffle stuff with the deck of those who listen to my name, so why do we shuffle the deck before they're up there?
If there's a like, if there's a topic that is similar, like the bagging stuff, they all, they put them all together.
I didn't know what you meant, I thought that somebody was playing cards somewhere.
Well, it is. Ryan is shuffling the deck.
I just thought it was something as well.
Second, are we moving on any inclusionary zoning legislation yet? Okay. I heard Ms. Moore said that you guys haven't had a meeting together, maybe one year, two days, we did our, it's going. We, the people of Long Beach, say you're Long Beach, need you to meet, whatever it is that you need to meet, we elected you to meet on our behalf and we need you to get together. I don't know what's going on, you don't have to tell me, I don't want to know, but I do want it to come together and I need you to meet. If it's Monday, if it's Tuesday, if it's Wednesday, if it's Thursday, if it's Friday, if it's Saturday, I don't care, but we need you to come together on the issue. Language access was accomplished, we did the NWE tonight, we did a few other things that I'm very proud of some of the things we've done, but I feel like this, it's very slow, even with the changing of the guard, which was stated about the six months and we're rotating, everybody's going to get a turn, I don't see any of this stuff happening and that stuff I would also like to see, but congratulations on the things that you have done. Okay. Who sponsored the language acquisition, where did that, when did that start?
This actually began approximately three, almost four years ago, where I brought this up as an issue almost immediately after the hurricane, where many of the Latino families had no idea what to do because nothing was going on in a language they understood. That's where it began. And what we did is that we researched the amount of language access legislation that had been taking place and what we found was that there is a federal law that says that things of that nature, it's wrong to safety of people, have to be in a language that people understand by law. So it wasn't rocket science to come up with the idea of language legislation, but it's been something that's been around for a long time. And Ronnie, you know that there was a point where people of order eating backgrounds, 73% of order eatings dropped out of high school and middle school at one time because of the language issue. It led to a giant Supreme Court lawsuit that beat up the technical with brought in. So there were laws on the book, so this isn't the new thing yet.
No, I was asking because I brought it here just to the city in 2004, nothing was done with it. So I was wondering who picked up the ball and when that took place. I congratulate you for doing it. I wish it had happened in 2004 when I was helping to run my department, things for bilingual in our department, but we will discuss that. Where does the city stand with the mole study, the individual mole study in general park homes? Have we moved forward with that?
I'm still waiting. Yeah.
So we still don't have an initial result from anybody's anything.
I mean, we're very concerned about it.
We've reached out for a few times.
Several times.
Several times, we've reached out for the study, they just gave us that same trouble.
All right.
We've reached out several times for this, for the actual study.
We're pretty productive, Scott's been thriving.
Yeah. I'm really concerned about the quality of life of these people. I'm really concerned about that helping welfare, these people, I'm really concerned about all of these things that have been going on since Sandy. We have seen all kinds of deconstruction, all kinds of things. We can, now, we don't, we don't have time to wait for her to, if that's the case. I need this body to move forward on individual study on behalf of citizens of this city and I thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. A warm congratulations, Mike, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Miles, also good to see you. Uh, Mr. Tinker, Marcus Tinker's here. Awesome, Mr. Tinker, thank you for staying with us too, almost the very end, thank you.
Marcus Tinker, President here at Long Beach. My question is simple, pretty much a follow-up from two weeks ago when I asked about the rotation of council president and Councilwoman Moore gave the chance to serve. So in case you guys forgot, I'll read off the votes from local government. Councilwoman Moore, 3,249, Councilwoman Ronald, 3,181, Council President, Lieutenant Torres, 3,018. The voters vote, she had the most, she should be council president. Now, when I asked the question two weeks ago, you said you guys were discussing outside of here. That was two weeks ago, so I want to update if you guys have actually met. But looking at your seating arrangement, nothing's changed, so she's still sitting there, you're still sitting there. So what's going on with us?
Well, at this point right now, I've requested meetings several times. We haven't all been able to make this meeting and that's really hard to say. The other thing I will mention is, and it's important for me to understand, that since 1932, the decision of the city council, who's put a president in the place, is strictly a vote of the city council. When the vote is not placed on the agenda, the official agenda, it's because we have not been able to discuss this before and that's what's happening. The other thing too, that you have to remember, is the rotation design was designed by us because we feel, we agree, there has to be rotation. There was a time where a president was here for eight, nine years and we passed that because of that. So for that reason, we fully agree, but we will have to be, before we can present this to the public, our actual vote. And I will attempt to get, to call the city council into a private meeting so we can discuss that.
Okay, was there an acceptance date within the past two weeks? And if there wasn't, which members of the council were not there?
I could be there, I could be there, unfortunately in Manhattan, and that's all I'm going to say, I'm not going to say anyone, because I think that our schedules, that we have personal schedules, have to be respected.
I respect that, but if you missed the last one where everybody else did, you were nowhere there. And I understand the whole charter and the way the city's structured with all this stuff, but if the residents have the power as voters to put people in office, and we say she gets the most votes, she should be president. If Councilwoman Ronald got the most votes, he should be council president. If you got the most votes, you should be council president. If she was given it, she should be given an opportunity based on what the voters said. We put you guys there, I understand you guys have certain authority with certain things, regardless of what elected official office you serve, you work for the people. So the people put any elected official in office, you work at the will of the voters who are the residents.
We appreciate what you're saying, but I think you need to also understand that the city charter is very clear, that the city council president is ordered by the city council, not by individual, not by lobbying. Well, we signed the city council charter that we would abide to with the laws and regulations of the city of Long Beach, for us to do otherwise would be violating law. So I ask right now, this has nothing to do with any vote outside, it's what we have to decide on, Mr. Tinker. And I appreciate that you're bringing this up and we're certainly going to take it into consideration, there's no question about that.
Right, well, one thing is this is the charter, just if you've got something in the charter, doesn't make it right, and if it was in the charter years ago, some things are helping, some things need revised, that's one of the things that should be revised. I think that should come from the voters, to be answered.
Okay, well, that...
Because if you have a vote, because they change, the change should come from the voters, not the people that...
Okay, we appreciate that, Mr. Tinker, thank you for being here today. Our next person is Ms. Sharon Asmon. Ms. Asmon, good to see you and I'm glad you stayed with us, you're the very last person and certainly very happy to have you. And again, welcome, welcome to our city council meeting.
My name is Sharon Asmon and I'm sorry that I'm... Because what I'm saying, I think it's four of us.
Yes.
True. Labor Day, Monday morning.
Speak into the microphone, I can't hear you.
Labor Day, Monday morning, we have, I have, my husband passed out in the bathroom and fell hit his head and was unresponsive. I called the fire department to have manual assistance, to have him transported to the hospital. The fire department showed up, which was, whatever, no ambulance. They came in and they worked him and they got him, woke him up, whatever. They came in, and they worked him, and they got him, woke up, whatever, got him on IV, whatever. One half hour and forty minutes before an ambulance showed up. On Monday morning, Labor Day, five o'clock in the morning, forty minutes for an ambulance to come and transport my husband to the hospital. I think it is a sad state of affairs when a person is passed out. We never called the fire department, we never called for help or anything, and I can't have an ambulance come and pick up my husband. Luckily, the fire department did show up. You guys know Sam Pinto, he was one of the individuals that came. He is, I don't know, a medic, what are you? Manci. He and his crew were able to IV him, wake him up, do whatever they needed to do, and keep him with us until an ambulance showed up. It was, we thought, I thought that it made it a fatal, fatal issue. It was not. He ended up being in the hospital for two weeks, he's okay, had emergency surgery four days later. But my point is that this city, I don't know how many people live in this city, to not have an ambulance show up, or get a tube, show up forty minutes later is a big problem, huge. I don't know how are you going to fix this, but I think it has to be fixed. And that, that's... The fire department didn't make it, John, thanked them that they came. But what would you have done? What would have happened if he, they wouldn't have been able to deal with him? What would you have done? What would Long Beach have done? What would, what? And we don't even have a hospital. And I'm not even going there. I'm just going on the fact that there was no ambulance available to come and get my husband. And I think you need to take note, and I think that the city has to reevaluate. I don't know what plans are, it could be worse here and there, but I think it needs to be reevaluated. I'm sorry that I'm taking one of these...
But thank you, everyone, for staying with us this late. Because, you know, it's important to be a part of this process, and then we are appreciative for everyone to stay with us, who have done with this process tonight. Thank you again, and get home safely, everyone.